I am, I am very happy to relinquish that title.
Yes, before Councilman Rue, there was Councilman Wu, seen here with then presidential candidate Bill Clinton as they surveyed the damage from the 1992 L.A. riots. Hollywood's councilmen from 1985 to 1993, Wu gained attention for supporting multi-ethnic causes beyond his Asian constituency. For example, he supported much of the black community when he led the charge to oust then-police chief Daryl Gates after the Rodney King videotaped beating by LAPD officers.
There was a need for leadership which gets beyond the kind of tribalism that tends to separate us and leadership which tries to move us ahead for what's best for the city overall.
Councilman David Rue also recognized another of his mentors, Dr. Mike Hong, Korean-American chemist, businessman, and philanthropist.
And that is the opportunity I received from the United States. This is a great country and I always love this country.
And it's only fitting that these two pioneers were honored to cap off Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month here in Los Angeles. Outside City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Former councilmember Michael Wu currently serves as dean of the College of Environmental Design at Cal Poly Pomona. While if you're an entrepreneur looking to drum up business, there may be no better partner than the city of L.A. The L.A. Vendor Fair gave business owners and other merchants a fair shot at landing a lucrative city contract. Anna Marcos has more.
The city of L.A. likes doing business and it's here to prove it to vendors, contractors, big and small businesses, and anyone who wants to do a little commerce with the city. This is the L.A. Vendor Fair. More than 120 vendors are showing off their goods, hoping to get a contract with the city. They offer everything from graffiti removal to sustainable goods, to the latest in L.A. enforcement and emergency lights. Low-flow urinals, also a hot-ticket item.
We do a tremendous amount of purchasing for the city. You know, we purchase close to half a billion dollars a year in commodities.
After all, those fire and police uniforms and all those city vehicles and computers have to come from somewhere. Why not your company? And if you have no idea how to get a piece of the city contract pie, city staff are also on hand to show you how and train you on submitting bids.
Sometimes people think or that it's very difficult to do business with the city. This is an opportunity that we can sit down with them and explain the process to them. We bring any different, you know, small businesses and minority businesses in.
And by the end of the day, it appears there just might be a few more lucrative contracts for some of these entrepreneurs. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information on working with the city of L.A., visit the Department of General Services at GSD.LACity.org and click on Supply Services. Turning now to the growing power of the Latina community in L.A. as not one, but two women of Latino heritage now sit on the L.A. City Council after the recent elections. Gil Reyes takes us to one event that aims to further strengthen the pull of L.A. Latinas.
Speaking to women, labor leader Maria Elena DeRazo has a different take on the president's proposed wall along the Mexican border.
We're gonna build a wall, but we're gonna build it around our families and our children and our communities to protect ourselves from anybody who wants to harm us, from anybody that wants to divide us.
DeRazo, who's running for a seat on the California State Senate encouraging women to unite, at the second annual Latina Conference in South L.A. The event hosted by area councilman Corin Price.
We know how important women are in our society, how important they are in the Ninth District, and we just want to do all we can to help cultivate leadership, to encourage women to be all they can be and to know that they've got the full support of the council office in making that happen.
The potential political influence of Latinas is growing. A report from Hispanus Organized for Political Equality, or HOPE, found that one in five people in California is now Latina. In Los Angeles, those numbers increased to one in four. If organized for common causes like wage equality, women, and immigrant rights, that packs a lot of political muscle.
We need to be active. We need to push our families to be active. If you are eligible to vote, that is your voice, that is your power. Do not give it away.
The event at L.A. Trade Tech College included networking opportunities for women, also tips for tapping into one's own political potential.
We start in our schools, start in our churches, and then move up on to attend these council meetings that we have and attend these events that are being sponsored, which is a good beginning.
At the Latina Conference in South L.A., I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Latinas have also strengthened their influence in business. The number of Latina-owned businesses in California has surged 111% since 2007 and the Great Recession. Well, shifting gears now as we move one step closer to getting a Metro Rail line to LAX. And as one leg of the Crenshaw-LAX line comes to an end, a special machine that helped in the construction faces retirement. Anna Marcos has more from the future Lamert Park Station.
What you're seeing is not just any old machine boring a giant hole. You are watching Harriet at work. Yes, she's got a name, and she just broke through the last bit of underground tunnel for the future Crenshaw-LAX Metro Rail line at the Lamert Park Station. Three of the eight stations will be underground, and boy, does Harriet multitask. She breaks dirt and lays panels as she goes.
Things that encircle and arcs are very strong and it supports each other, so that when you look at this type of a dynamic, if there's an earthquake, I would be in a subway tunnel.
This is the safest place to be?
Absolutely.
Look at this. Several miles of double tunnels. There's another tunnel just like this. Harriet did all this, working five days a week, 24 hours a day, for almost a year, but now Harriet is tired and needs a rest.
We're saying goodbye to Harriet. It's been a fantastic year for metro transportation and this transportation revolution.
We're gonna retire Harriet. She's done her job, and she's done a fabulous job.
The farewell party and the Harriet cake may signal the end of Harriet's tunneling days, but construction work has now hit full swing all along the line that will connect Angelinos to South L.A. and eventually to LAX. The 96th Street Station, which will connect the airport through a people mover, is now in the design phase.
What comes along with it is job opportunities in addition to the improvement of the environment, so it's all good.
But I think it does bring about a renaissance and increases accessibility for people in the community to the entire system.
There will soon be a day when the growing Metro Rail system will allow us to travel this train from LAX to Lamert Park, to Santa Monica, to Long Beach, to Pasadena, and to Azusa. We will have an alternative to driving.
Metro officials also have solutions and help for small businesses along the rail line.
If you're a small business out there listening, impacted by construction on this project, contact Metro immediately. We know that it is worth the hassle, and we will all benefit at the end.
So for now, goodbye to Harriet and hello to L.A.'s newest Metro Rail line. It is set to be completed in fall of 2019. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Crenshaw-LAX line will also serve as a connector between the Expo Line and the Green Line. Well, it's the first boarding school in downtown L.A. that encourages young students from across the world to pursue their dreams. Rasha Goel has more on why this group of graduates are part of a unique and special
Landry Arumba from Africa is among this unique batch of students graduating from high school. He is part of the first senior graduating class at the American University Preparatory School, an international boarding school in downtown Los Angeles.
I'm a small boy from a small country in Africa. I never thought I could find an opportunity like this, but all it took was I keep believing in myself and my ability, and I used the internet. I just keep searching and searching. Don't give up. I gave up so many times when I saw schools and they're like, "We don't want international students from Africa," but you just keep looking.
The high school opened in 2014 and is embedded in the financial district. It is open to both international and domestic students. These students were part of the school's first sophomore class.
I've had the experience of living with roommates from across the world here at AUP, and it's been my honor to get to know people from different cultures.
The city of Los Angeles welcomes you. Los Angeles respects you, and that is because we know you. It is estimated that there are 224 languages spoken in Los Angeles. We are home, very often, to the second-largest population of many immigrants outside of the native country.
This batch represents a diverse group of a dozen high school students from Afghanistan, Botswana, Nigeria, Russia, Taiwan, Rwanda, Venezuela, and the U.S. The curriculum at the school focuses on preparing students for college and training them to be future global leaders.
We all come together. We talk about world issues. We talk about it from different perspectives, from different countries. It's just a great global environment, which is exactly what downtown Los Angeles is all about.
For many here, they are now on their way to make their dreams come true. Some of these students will be continuing on to Stanford, MIT, USC, and Penn State for higher education. And as in Arumba's case, you can always reach for the stars even when things seem impossible. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
If you'd like more information on the program and admissions, you can check out the school's website at AUPschool.org. Well, seniors at West Adams High were also celebrating graduation as parents and relatives beamed with pride. But for one senior, graduation day was about making her own kids proud. Gil Reyes has more.
Meet Melissa Vivas, valedictorian at West Adams Preparatory High School's class of 2017. She's also a teen mom, raising a pair of two-year-old twin daughters plus a five-month-old baby girl.
I did it because they're my motivation. I want them to have a better life than the one I did. I want them to look at me and think I'm the role model for them.
Melissa graduates with a perfect 4.0 GPA. It hasn't been easy. Her day usually starts at 5:00 in the morning.
Then I had to make breakfast for my kids. I would get ready around 7:00 and head up to school around 8:00, catch the bus, and be there at school at 8:10 exactly for the bell to ring.
Melissa credits her husband, mom, and the L.A. Promise Fund for helping her through. The L.A. Promise Fund rearranged her class assignments to meet her busy schedule and helped in the college application process. It also provided her class paid, community-based internships. Melissa interned at the United Way.
They would train us to become leaders, to learn what's going on in our community and to give back to them, to put our voices for the ones that don't have voices and to be strong despite all the obstacles and all the people out there that want us to not continue up.
Today, we celebrate students like Melissa, and tomorrow, we just jump right back on the wheel to provide more opportunities for students like Melissa here in South Los Angeles. First-generation students, students of color, foster kids, really any student that needs the extra boost and the extra resources to accomplish whatever it is they seek to accomplish.
Melissa was accepted to several universities but is headed to Cal State Los Angeles. In the West Adams District, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Now, Melissa plans to pursue a career in nursing so she can help others in her community. Well, turning now to an Italian restaurant that's keeping tradition alive in Chinatown. And now, the iconic eatery is getting its Italian heritage recognized with a renaming of a street corner. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Pastrami, number six.
We're here. To go.
Ah, yes, good old Italian pastrami. This old Italian restaurant sits just off the edge of Chinatown. The area was once an Italian neighborhood, Victor Heights, before the influx of new immigrants changed its makeup. But now, council District One officials are giving the Italian hangout a little street The street corner has a new name, East Side Market Square, in honor of the longstanding restaurant.
The fact that we've been here, you know, for all those years and we were able to continue to stay in business and even during the riots, even during the hard times, they still, they still kept it open. It's great that, you know, we're able to be recognized and have some type of commemorative plaque.
Giovanni Ann Julie, his three sons, his wife, brother, and sister-in-law, worked hard to keep the business afloat. The secret ingredient...
I do fresh food, starting each morning to start with fresh pots, fresh, clean pots with olive oil and garlic and basil.
At one time in the 1920s, there were four Italian markets in the area. This one is the last remaining one.
And I think so long as you stay true to your recipes and your heritage and your culture, people are gonna value that, and they're gonna keep coming for decades to come.
So what are those tasty morsels that keep the people coming back?
I love the lasagna. I love it. And I love the eggplant.
So what's a Japanese-American doing eating Italian food?
This is L.A. I come regularly to the East Side Market, have Ole Miss sandwiches, lots of gravy and sauce.
And the Ann Julies say immigrants of all kinds are always welcome.
It wasn't easy. You can ask me, I was 11 years old when I first arrived. Immigrants should be loved just like anybody else, because they are the future of America.
Now, the restaurant has its own future to look forward to. It will always be remembered through the renaming of a street corner. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The restaurant is located at 1013 Alpine Street near downtown L.A. Well, nearby in Boyle Heights, some folks got to see what long-awaited street improvements could look like once they're finished. As Gil Reyes reports, the upgrades blend safety and art.
This painted sidewalk is only temporary but aims to slow down the parade of vehicles coming off the 101, 5, and 10 freeways. Drivers entering this community, Pico Aliso, that's in Boyle Heights.
They're not aware that people live here, and so they either speed through or they're making right-hand turns and almost hitting people. We are looking at different strategies and efforts to make the streets safer, but also great streets.
Proyecto Pastoral's Community in Action Program unveils the temporary crosswalk on Fourth and Glass Streets, an area with a lot of children. The group's volunteers are collaborating with the mayor's Great Streets Program to make the crosswalk permanent. Great Streets is a plan to refurbish 15 of the city's busiest corridors.
Residents from Proyecto Pastoral and resident leaders have been involved for the last several months, doing door-to-door knocking and collecting surveys and meeting with residents to collect information about the needs and the vision for a safer community.
Also added, temporary street signs, trees, and furniture, possible previews of things to come. Though the weekend traffic isn't too bad, it's gotten worse since the Sixth Street Bridge closed for renovations.
That has brought an overflow of traffic into our area, and so as a result, we've had incidents where there's traffic congestion that are blocking, creating barricades.
The masked Mexican wrestlers or luchadores pay homage to this mostly Spanish-speaking community. Even Nacho Libre showed up to lay the smackdown for safer streets. In Pico Aliso, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The Great Streets Initiative aims to beautify corridors for safer walking, cycling, and shopping. The plan calls for improving 15 streets, one from each city council district. As we head into summer, a lot of us will be spending time enjoying the L.A. River, but this winter's heavy rains have left many parts of the river a mess, so the community has stepped up to lend a helping hand. Rasha Goel has more.
We want our river back. Do you agree?
Yeah!
Yes, we do, and together, we're making it happen.
Angelinos of all ages had no problem getting their hands dirty as they came out to support the 28th Annual Great L.A. River Cleanup, filling trash bag after trash bag.
This is public space. Let's get in there and make it ours and actually use it.
Friends of the L.A. River, a nonprofit organization ensuring the sustainability of the L.A. River, recently put on a three-weekend cleanup event called La Gran Limpieza. It covered 14 sites along the upper, mid, and lower parts of the river. This particular event focused on the Lower River.
All of us together are mobilizing over 10,000 volunteers to clean what we estimate is going to be 100 tons of trash out of this river.
Not a surprise, considering officials say nearly 2,000 storm drains open up to the river, and this year's rains also had a significant impact.
L.A. River is a big part of our local culture, so, you know, we want to help to change it for the better.
And that will happen, volunteers say, if we all do our part.
We need to reduce our pollution, reduce our trash that ends up in the ocean, ends up in our environment.
For L.A. This Week, I'm Rasha Goel.
Officials say this is the largest urban river cleanup in the nation. Councilmember Gil Sedia officially begins his second term, an electric car sharing program hits the road, and community members dive into summer at the Hollywood Pool. All these stories in City Beat. L.A. City Councilmember Gil Sedia was officially sworn in by the city clerk, marking the beginning of a second term on the Los Angeles City Council after winning a contentious and drawn-out election. Sedia will continue to lead on tenant rights issues as chair of the Housing Committee and as the chair of the Immigrant Affairs and Civil Rights Committee. Sedia will continue to represent a district that was created as a result of a redistricting lawsuit, which created an additional seat to represent the growing Latino population. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, alongside state officials and the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, launched the Blue L.A. Electric Car Sharing Program. Officials say the program is a pilot project that will deploy 100 electric cars and 200 EV charging stations in disadvantaged communities, providing residents with self-service access to electric cars beginning later this year. It will also help L.A. meet clean air goals and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Officials say the program is the largest in the nation for disadvantaged communities.
Now, we have a tool reducing congestion and emissions in neighborhoods that experience the greatest pollution. Here, where the asthma and cancer rates are highest, we can say, not only do we have a solution, but a great way to get around.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell took the first dive into the Hollywood Pool, marking the opening of the facility for the summer season. The pool, which is located at the Hollywood Recreation Center at Santa Monica Boulevard between Cole Avenue and Coengke Boulevard, opened to the public in 2015 after an extensive renovation project. The 9,500-square-foot pool features a slide, three shaded bleachers, and California-friendly landscaping. Recreational swimming hours will be from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on weekends.
I want to teach and spread the word about the joys of swimming and learning how to swim and what great exercise it is and how the whole entire family can get in the pool together.
And if you or your kids don't know how to swim but want to learn, you're in luck. A city swim program that's been around for more than a decade returns for the summer, and all you have to do is show up. Rasha Goel has more.
Operation Splash is now in full swing at 38 L.A. City seasonal swimming pools. The program offers free swim lessons for kids and adults in low-income areas and a junior lifeguard training program for kids ages 10 to 17.
This program, Operation Splash, not only is a preventative tool to eliminate drownings, but also it gives us an opportunity to promote healthy living, exercise with kids and adults at our public pools.
The kickoff celebration took place at the 109th Street Pool in Watts, which has been a part of the community for decades.
The pool was originally built in the 1930s and has been serving the Watts community for generations. This pool serves an estimated 6,000 residents that live within a one-half-mile radius walking distance from here.
Jamia Bent, who hopes to compete on the Olympic water polo team one day, discovered her passion at L.A. City Pools.
I just want to thank L.A. 84 and the aquatic programs for giving me this opportunity, because I never would've, like, I never would've seen what I was capable of in becoming a goalie.
This is the 12th year for Operation Splash, a collaborative effort between the city's Department of Recreation and Parks Aquatic Division, the L.A. 84 Foundation, and Kaiser Permanente.
Kaiser Permanente's Operation Splash is about getting out there and being very active. Exercise reduces not only the risk of chronic diseases like high blood pressure or diabetes, but also helps in prevention of the cancer.
A little splashing with many benefits. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
A youth swim pass, which costs $10 and gives access to all aquatic facilities throughout the summer, is also available. You can check out LAParks.org for more information. Well, grab a picnic and blanket as Shakespeare Comes Alive by the Sea. Grab a donut and help those in need during a donation event, and here's your chance to sing your heart out, just like Maria. All this in this week's Things to Do. Shakespeare by the Sea presents Macbeth as one of two offerings in its 20th anniversary season. If you're seeking quality family entertainment, Shakespeare by the Sea's free performances can't be beat. Pack a picnic, a blanket and beach chair, gather loved ones, and settle in under the stars for a night of classic entertainment. The tales are timeless, the admission ticketless, and the experience priceless. Take in the experience on June 24th at Point Furman Park, located at 807 West Paseo Del Mar in San Pedro. For more, visit ShakespeareByTheSea.org. L.A. Councilmember Mitchell Englander and the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission invite you to donuts and donations. Drop off your donations and learn more about everything CD12 and the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission are doing to combat the ongoing homelessness issues in our neighborhood. The Rescue Mission serves as a link to social services in the community. Its team is dedicated to providing the homeless men, women, children, veterans, and families the opportunity to obtain food, shelter, basic life necessities, and the chance to rebuild a foundation for individual and family restoration. So clean out your closet and bring items for donation while enjoying a few donuts and coffee with the community. It all takes place Saturday, June 24th, from 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission located at 8756 Camby Avenue in Northridge.
The hills are alive with the sound of music.
The Hollywood Hills are alive with the Sound of Music, and you can be part of the action as you belt out all of your favorite tunes during the Sound of Music sing-along. Sing along with Maria and join in choruses of My Favorite Things, along with thousands of fans who love the Oscar-winning movie as much as you do. Don't miss the fun on June 24th at 6:30 p.m. For more, visit HollywoodBowl.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
These are a few of my favorite things.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Kev from Chatsworth. Offering your taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. If everybody would please take their seats. Today is Wednesday, June 21st. I want to welcome you to City Hall in your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscainos, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rue moves, Mr. Weezer seconds, continue.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coretts moves and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds, continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Items 27, 28, and 29 to Friday, June 23rd.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered, continue.
Mr. President, there is also a request from the Housing Department to receive and file Item 35B.
Okay, without objection. Go ahead.
Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on 1, 3, 5, 7, and 9.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And Mr. President, those orders will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, remind me if we get to that number, okay?
And then Items 10 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 16, 21, 30, 31, and 32 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on these items. Please.
Mr. President, there is a request to hold Item 18.
Okay, let's hold 18 and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And again, Mr. President, those orders will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12.
Thank you. That brings us where?
Items 34 through 46 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, we have cards on 34, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 45, and 46.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on what's remaining. Let's, Mr. Weezer?
Yes, can we hold 44 on the desk, please?
Was that 44?
44, please.
Let's hold that.
Thank you.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll.
Yes, 37.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, Mr. Sadio has arrived, which should bring us to... We're still short, okay. I thought we had made the magic mark. All right, so that brings us where?
To presentations or items called special.
Okay, I want to recognize Mr. Coretts. Mr. Coretts, are you ready to begin the presentation portion? The floor is yours.
Colleagues, it's my honor and privilege to be the first to wish Ron Lorenzen a long and joyous and well-deserved retirement. Ron's been working in the tree care profession for more than 40 years. He owned a tree care company until he joined the City of Los Angeles as a tree surgeon in 1992. He worked his way through the urban forestry division ranks and became the Assistant Chief Forester in 2006. Over the years, he worked his way up to be one of the Assistant Directors in the Bureau of Street Services. I know that my chief of staff, Joan Pellicoe, has worked with Ron since she started as a field deputy in C.D. 5 12 years ago, and she fondly remembers during the storms of 2005 that Ron was very hands-on with the council office and the community, always keeping them up to date when crews could come out and remove fallen limbs and trees. Staff throughout the city family agree. Ron Lorenzen has been the ultimate public servant, and no job has been too big or too small for Ron. In fact, here in C.D. 5, he's been instrumental in guiding and directing our office, working with urban forestry through the recession, through the drought, trees and power lines, roots in the sidewalk, and protecting trees from overdevelopment. Now, I know I'm not going out on a limb here and wishing the next phase of your life will be stress-free, full of adventure, success, and happiness. We know that your roots will always be solidly planted in the foundation of your time here in the City of Los Angeles. While you extend your branches now to the next phase of your life with your wife, your three daughters, and your six grandchildren, may your retirement blossom with adventure and happiness as you bask in the warmth of your friends and your family. You'll always have a family here, your city family. And so while we don't want to see you retire, we wish you all the best and much success in the next phase of your life.
Let's give Ron a round. Mr. Coretts, if it's okay with you, I'd like to recognize Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to rise and thank Ron for his many, many years of service as Mr. Buscaino and I and many others around this horseshoe have worked over these last few years to craft the sidewalk repair policy that we've developed. Ron has been central to that because, of course, trees and sidewalks go hand-in-hand for better or for worse, and Ron's expertise has been second to none. And I've learned a great deal from you, Ron, and the cities. The legacy you leave behind is a great one. The ancient Greeks said that a society grows great when old men plant trees the shade of which they will never be able to rest in. And not that you're an old man, but our city and our society is certainly growing greater because of the work that you've done and the legacy that you've left behind. So congratulations on your retirement.
Back to you, Mr. Coretts.
Ron, would you like to say a few words?
You want me to say a few words?
We'd love that.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say I'm humbled by all of the praise and adulation, but I would really like to say that it has really been my sincere... but I would really like to say that it has really been my sincere pleasure, and I have been blessed to be able to serve the city of Los Angeles. I have always told everybody that I would never leave the city if I still enjoyed coming to work, and I will tell you that even up till today, I still enjoy coming to work every day. And I'm leaving because it's just that time of my life when I need to start a new chapter, but it has nothing to do with the city and the city family. And I want to thank all of the departments, council offices, bureaus, and everybody with whom I have ever interacted here at the city. It's been my sincere pleasure to serve you and to work alongside of you, and I just not... I cannot tell you how blessed God has been to me to let me be here and serve this city. It's the greatest city in the country. Although we are leaving the state and moving back east, I will still consider this to be home forever, and I just wish everybody the greatest luck as you move forward into a new chapter in the city of Los Angeles. Truly, we are moving into a new time and period for this city, and I just want the city to be blessed as well, and I just give you my sincere thanks.
You know, Mr. Coretts and Ron, we're gonna miss you. I mean, you are a pros pro, and all of the offices know when they really need to get something done, they could come to you, and you would work magic and be really creative. And in the ten years that I've been here, I've never gone out to lunch and seen this man anywhere until yesterday. So I think he knew he was a short timer, and he went out yesterday, and I was really shocked to see you away from the trappings of this building. But I wish you the best. Where back east? Now I'm just being nosy?
We are moving to a town about fifteen miles south of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, called Merle's Inlet.
Well, good for you and your family. And again, let's give him another round of applause. The city is losing a very, very good man.
And I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation from all of your city family on the city council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Mr. Krikorian, since we... We're okay?
Yeah, they can go.
I'm gonna now look to Mr. Harris Dawson for another presentation. The floor is yours. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask my colleague, Mr. Bob Blumenfeld, to join me for this presentation, as well as all of the representatives from the consulates of Caribbean nations represented here in Los Angeles. If you all would join us here.
Give him a round of applause. Welcome to City Hall. Why don't you guys line up behind Mr. Harris Dawson?
Come on, we gotta get it so you're on TV. First of all, colleagues and Mr. President, I'd like to begin this presentation by acknowledging Congresswoman Barbara Lee of Berkeley, California. She laid the foundation for what we now know as Caribbean Heritage Month. In June of 2005, she introduced a resolution to the United States Congress to celebrate the significance of the Caribbean people and their descendants in Los Angeles. In 2006, former President George Bush eagerly signed the proclamation, and there was unanimous support in the House of Representatives officially declaring June as the month of Caribbean Heritage Month. And so today, we're very, very excited, and I want us all to give them a round of applause. And if you'll just wave your hand up when we call your country. We've got representatives of the Bahamas with us today. We've got representatives of Belize here today, the Dominican Republic, Jamaica, Trinidad and Tobago, Guyana, St. Kitts and Nevis, St. Vincent, and the country and Grenada. Let's give them all a big round of applause. I think I might... Barbados, Aruba, Cuba, Puerto Rico. St. Lucia. Yeah, it's building. Today, we take the opportunity to acknowledge Caribbean Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. Los Angeles is home to some, almost nearly forty thousand immigrants from the Caribbean. This does not include people from the U.S. Virgin Islands. This does not include people from the island of Puerto Rico, both of which are U.S. territories. When you take that community together, you have a very significant community here in the city of Los Angeles that lends itself in lots and lots and lots of ways, from the restaurants we go to to the very operation of the city that we call home. We especially want to celebrate this month, this year, as we have national leadership that we're not sure... Every president since Bush, and that's only Obama, was happily celebrated Caribbean Heritage Month. We're not sure what's gonna happen in the White House this year, so we want to make sure, again, we do it in Los Angeles. We unite behind a common banner of humanity, one that celebrates the differences between us and highlights the particular contributions of each group. Many, many individuals from a variety of countries, many of you will remember our own, the highest-ranking African-American elected official in the state of California, Lieutenant Governor... Lieutenant Governor Merv Diemoli was the son of Trinidad. Trinidad and Tobago? Yeah, I gotta get it right. And there are a host of others, from Neil deGrasse Tyson, who hails from Puerto Rico, our new Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor of Puerto Rico, folks from Cuba and Jamaica, and so, so many others. I want to call to the mic at this moment for a presentation, our colleague and someone who's actually a little bit more Caribbean than I am, our own Bob Blumenfeld.
Thank you. Thank you, Marquis. And thank you for putting this wonderful presentation together. I think it's so important to honor Caribbean heritage. You mentioned Alexander Hamilton, who created our modern-day money system, whose life defied odds when you look at the Broadway show, which we're all trying to get to at some point. And of course, Bob Marley, reggae. I mean, you can't go to the Caribbean without hearing that the moment you get off the plane. For me, though, you know, when I grew up, I didn't know a lot about Caribbean heritage. But I married into it because my wife's from the Caribbean. She's from St. Thomas, and her family is from there, and we go there every year, several times a year. In fact, she's in the Caribbean at this very moment, and it's become a part of our heritage. In fact, we send our kids there during the summer to go to camp, and we just love it. And having been there and spending so much time there, I feel a special affection. And it's an amazing place for many reasons. One, as you mentioned, it's large when you talk about all the islands that are there, but it's also a series of small towns and communities, as everyone here knows. I remember the first time I went with my wife before we were married, and we get off the plane, and one of the security people looks at her passport and says, "Watlington, you're related to Roy Watlington?" I'm like, "Yeah, that's her father." And everybody knows everybody's business, which is fantastic.
Love the accent, Bob.
Yeah, forgive the accent, everybody. I shouldn't try. But it's wonderful. And one of the things you realize when you spend time there, too, is that the history is so rich from so many different areas. I mean, it's seven hundred different islands, reefs, caves, but you have the old history from the 1600s and 1800s, when the colonial history, when slaves were brought to the Caribbean. You've got, starting with Haiti in 1804, when the nations began to gain their independence. And you have all of these different historical moments, and whenever you go out to a restaurant or store or anywhere, you can see the different pieces of the history, whether it's the large Captain Morgan sign as you come off the airport in St. Thomas, or the castles, or the government structures, and you see and feel the history of all of the folks that are there. And it reminds you that Caribbean history is U.S. history in many ways, and much richer and deeper in regards because you have so many countries in the Dutch influence and the German influence mixing together that make the area so special. Not to mention, it's a wonderful vacation spot, and the Mai Tais and the Mokojumbis folks walking around and all the rest. But you've had also amazing people... That's the buzzer, but I'll ignore that. Like Juan Marcial, and Orlando Cepeda emerged as idols of millions of young people during the civil rights movement, regardless of race. Their legacy has continued. Roberto Clemente from Puerto Rico, after his untimely death delivering aid to Nicaragua after a devastating earthquake, he was the first Caribbean player enshrined in the Hall of Fame, the baseball Hall of Fame. So many folks. He won an MVP award, two World Series, three thousand hits, but like everybody in the Caribbean, he didn't forget where he came from. And I just use him as an example because the other thing you find with all of the folks in the diaspora here in Los Angeles is that you can take the Caribbean person out of the Caribbean, but you can't take the person or the Caribbean out of the person. Because when you meet somebody from the Caribbean, there's that immediate connection, and they want to celebrate their heritage, and that's what's so wonderful about today. And I appreciate being a part of today's celebration, and let's get on with it.
Excellent.
All right.
One more time for Bob Blumenfeld. His accent was better than mine. Another prominent person I'd like to acknowledge is Dr. Harold Ganga from Trinidad and Tobago. He is the chairman of the Los Angeles Culture Festival. Let's give him a round of applause, Dr. Ganga. It has been instrumental in transforming and promoting the concept of One World, One People. Dr. Ganga also is the president of our own Hollywood Carnival, right here in the city of Los Angeles. During his tenure as president, he has forged a very successful three-mile parade on the world-famous Hollywood Boulevard the last Saturday in June of each year. It is the largest carnival parade we have here on the West Coast. So, Dr. Ganga, come on up and make some comments.
Thank you, and good morning, everybody. Good morning to the honorable councilmembers, consulates, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to especially thank Honorable Councilman Mr. Harris Dawson for his initiative and kind consideration to present and host the inaugural Caribbean American Heritage Recognition Day at City Hall. Los Angeles Culture Festival is proud to be a partner associated with presenting this event. Los Angeles Culture Festival is a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organization. Embedded in our motto is "One World, One People" because that's what we support. We embrace and encourage a One World, One People by promoting unity and diversity in our communities through cultural awareness. Los Angeles Culture Festival keep the broader interest of our communities in mind as we advance our goal of sharing the various traditions, cultures, costume, arts, dances, food, music of the world as one people. Los Angeles Culture Festival strongly believes that when we expose the richness of our various cultures in a positive way in our communities, we embrace and learn more about each other, it brings out the goodness, and we do what's best for humanity. Today, we celebrate Caribbean Heritage Day. The people of the Caribbean American heritage feel very honored by the U.S. government proclamation recognizing their many contribution to the United States. Caribbean immigrants have been contributing to the well-being of American society since the founding. Alexander Hamilton, the first Secretary of the Treasury from the United States, was from the Caribbean. Secretary of State Colin Power, Attorney General Eric Holder, Lieutenant Governor Merv Diemoli, some of our local people, and many other prominent politicians. In the music and film industry, we have Harry Belafonte, Sidney Poindexter, most recently Rihanna, Nicki Minaj, and people of that sort. They light up the day for us. The Caribbean American people continue to excel in many areas, earning their place as a great contributor to this great country. Over the last thirty years, I've been instrumental in promoting the Caribbean culture in our communities through music, concert, dances, parades, festivals, films, and various means. My dedication and waverings support to create positive experience so others may enjoy the rich Caribbean culture is never-ending. The opportunity as chairman of the Los Angeles Culture Festival, representing all countries and cultures of the world, create an avenue to integrate the beautiful Caribbean heritage and culture as a mainstay to the Hollywood Carnival Parade. We ask everyone to join us on Saturday, June 24th, to enjoy eleven hours of family fun as we celebrate our sixth edition of the Los Angeles Culture Festival and Hollywood Carnival Parade on the world-famous Hollywood Boulevard. Our parade is approximately three miles and start at 11:00 a.m. on Hollywood Boulevard in Normandy and end at Hollywood and Highland. There are over forty countries that participate in our parade. At the end of the parade, we create a Carnival Culture Village at 6800 Hollywood Boulevard, next to the Jimmy Kimmel stage. The village accommodated several thousand people with a full liquor bar, a soundstage, and international food court, and it opened until 9:30 at night. Again, everyone is invited to come and enjoy this great family event. It was an honor to be here today for the inaugural Caribbean American Heritage Day celebration and Los Angeles Culture Festival and the Hollywood Carnival Parade kickoff. A special thanks again to Councilman Mr. Harris Dawson for his effort in making this event possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr...
Can we cue up the video, please, so we can get a sample of what the parade looks like? Sound.
Mr. Harris Dawson, I do have a few members that would like to say a few words. I'd like to recognize Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleagues for bringing forth Caribbean Heritage Recognition Day and really celebrating the whole month and the whole year. We know what a tremendous contribution folks in the Caribbean play, and they ask for plays in life, not only of our district, but our city, our world. So we just appreciate celebrating the heritage, the music, the dance, the art, the fun, the camaraderie, and the humanity. Keep up the good work, and let's continue to celebrate. Thank you.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and thank Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson and Bob Blumenfeld for bringing this inaugural Caribbean Heritage Recognition Day. And I just wanted to stand because I just know so many people of Caribbean descent who have been influential in my life, and I just want to recognize two people, individuals, behind you, and that's Dr. Earl Charles, who worked with me at KED. Earl Charles, who worked with me at Kedron, and of course, Dr. Kedron Gill, or I should, or actually, I should refer him to as the honorary consul of St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Thank you, sir, for all your service and thank you for bringing this today. This is the rich diversity of what Los Angeles is. Thank you so very much.
Yes, it is, Mr. Rue. Back to you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. We are very excited about the parade on this coming weekend. Mr. Sadio told me, members, that he has extra yavetas if you need to borrow one to wear to the parade this weekend. We want to thank everybody who's here today and our sponsors for this event, Dark Container, Hollywood Carnival, the Los Angeles Cultural Festival. We have some performers. Little Belize is here, as well as esteemed guests. We'll have food and music out on Spring Street later this afternoon or around lunchtime. Also, want to give special recognition to Los Angeles's own Elga Sharp, who was our director of protocol for Mayor Villarrealosa. When we wanted to do this, Mayor Han, excuse me, when we wanted to do this, somebody on my staff said we should call someone who knows about it, and you had been working on this for years, and so we're very appreciative of your work on this project and are happy to bring it to fruition today.
Thank you very much.
One more time for Elga Sharp. With that, we have presentations that we're going to present and pictures that we're going to take, but before we take our seats, I want to invite in a little bit of a surprise taste of the Hollywood Carnival. All right, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and all of our elected officials, we want to acknowledge Caribbean Heritage Month and present you all with this certificate that you will have for all of your councilits. Big round of applause. No, you got to be in the picture. You can't take a picture. Thank you so much, members and Council President.
Thank you. Let's give him one more round of applause.
If you all want to come this way.
Roll in. All right, so, Mr. Krikorian for recognition.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't know how anybody can possibly follow that.
I feel sorry for you.
But in a sense, there's an irony in it because while many young people around Los Angeles are enjoying their summer vacation now, some of them may be going to Hollywood Carnival, I don't know, or other places, and enjoying themselves, there's a group of four young people that I wanted to introduce who have spent all day, every day, for the last two weeks, learning about public service, learning about the history of Los Angeles, learning about city services and the way the city operates through the San Fernando Valley Youth Leadership Academy that I run through my office. And I just wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank them for their enthusiasm about service, thank them for setting aside the time to learn more about how our city operates, and I know that you're going to be hearing, a few years down the road, you're going to be hearing about each of these extraordinary young people who have already set their sights on a better future for themselves and for Los Angeles and are taking the steps to make that real. So, I want to introduce first Arpin Kilinyan, who is an incoming senior at Cleveland Humanities Magnet, Cleveland High School, my alma mater. She is ranked 21st nationally in rhythmic gymnastics and is on the Junior Olympic Team and is also an ambassador of the National Society for High School Scholars, and yet also makes the time to be a leader in her school and in her community and will be even more so after completing this program. So, Arpin, thank you very much.
Give her a round of applause.
Clarissa Dominguez is an incoming senior at Van Nuys Math and Science Magnet. She's the vice president of the Van Nuys Tassel Chapter, which is teaching and sharing skills to enrich lives. She teaches Cambodian children English and provides relief services to their families. She's also a varsity catcher on the school softball team, and again, still finds the time to devote to improving her school and her community, and so I want to thank and congratulate Clarissa. Next is Khachi Kovenisian, who is an incoming senior at Grant High School, where he serves as the student body president. In addition to his leadership of his colleagues and the student body at Grant, he's also a swim instructor and lifeguard at Mid Valley YMCA, so also serving the community through the Y as well, and I know that he will be off to bigger and better things in his career of service as well. So, Khachi, congratulations. And finally, also from Grant High School is incoming junior Mary Sakayan. Mary is the Human Relations Officer at Grant High's Student Government. She's also the president of the very active and successful Armenian Club at Grant and is active with the Armenian Church Youth Organization, especially at St. Peter's Apostolic Church where her family attends. And Mary, I want to thank you as well for being here with us and for the route that you're choosing to take in serving your community in the future. So, congratulations to you.
Wonderful. Let's give her a round of applause as well.
Mr. President, the future is bright with young people like these. Thank you very much for taking a moment to recognize them.
Yeah, no, thank you, and good luck to each and every one of you. Let's do this. I want to take care of our commissioner that's been here since the beginning. At least he got a chance to enjoy the show, but I want to call up Mr. Arnold Sachs. That's how we'll start this off. Mr. Sachs has cards 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 34, 38, 39, 45, 46, and he's got general public comment. Mr. Sachs, please come forward. And item 40.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs, and I'm going to deal with 38, 39, which are the urban area security, the LAPD. This mentioned something about salaries, and I'm so wondering, the magnanimous Mayor Spaghetti found $10 million in overtime to spend, $10 million to cover LAPD overtime, but he didn't mention covering the 90 million, the 90,000 million hours or 90,000 hours of overtime that were included in the budget? And why is Metro paying for overtime for LAPD for security? The Water Board Commissioner, I'd like to get his opinion on the county's plan for recapturing runoff. The rate hikes, the hourly rate hikes for the DWP, will they include the salary increases? Will they include rate hikes for the public? The DWP infrastructure with all the water mains that are breaking? And maybe, again, back to the county's plan for urban runoff, doing something with the LA River that would eliminate the concrete because all that concrete allows for the runoff of rainwater. If you eliminated the concrete, the water would soak back into the ground and refill the aquifer instead of this ambitious plan to do the same thing over again and get worse results. Item 40 refers to violence against women with disabilities. You know, yesterday, there was an item in the LA County Agenda looking for 200 beds for domestic violence, victims of domestic violence. So, is that included in this agenda item? Who's going to be trained? Is the LAPD going to be trained in this? Is there a solution to find housing for, never mind victims of disabilities, how about people with disabilities? How about ADA-compliant housing? Oh, yeah, there was a lawsuit against the city. It wasn't about building ADA-compliant or lack of building, it was taking the money. The city actually used the money that was allocated to build houses and used it for something else. So, how did that work out? Well, the ADA compliant went out the window, the city settled the lawsuit for $200 million, and the public got screwed. Welcome to your City Hall. So, back to one other thing, the public hearing notice has been reduced for this project from 30 days to 10 days. Why is that? It's like coming here to your city council and finding out you only get to speak for three minutes because your city council has so much on the agenda.
Mr. Sachs, we'll give you your minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
My minute for general public comment will again refer to something the county has done. Two things. One, you just voted for a parks proposition to have yourself assessed the money to pay for parks, and yet yesterday, they talked about the county and the city having excess funds. The city has excess funds for parks? How come it's so park poor? Where is the city council stepping up to find out just exactly what does excess funds in parking funding means and why isn't it being used in the city? And number two, Mayor Spaghetti is about to become the new MTA chairperson, but better than that, there are now two sitting board members, Ira Nagerian and John Fasana, and they are lucky enough to have sat through two tax increases. The first one, Measure R, which was for $1.3 billion, and the second one for Measure M of 800.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Thank you. Mr. Sachs, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move to item 34. I'd like to ask Mr. Fundaburk to come forward. Sergeants, if you could let him through. Commissioner, the last time I saw you, we were planting trees, I think, on Pico Boulevard. Why don't you take a moment and make sure that the members of this council remember who you are?
My name is William Fundaburk, and thank you, council members, for your consideration today for my reappointment as the Commissioner to the Board of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. It's been a very interesting past four years. The Department of Water and Power staff and council have The Department of Water and Power staff and Council have made great strides solving the Owens Lake issues, making major changes in stormwater capture, in power and renewables, and I'm looking forward to, if you confirm me, to another five years, and want to thank especially Council President Wesson for his leadership in taking LA, DWP, and the city to the 21st century in terms of upgrades, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of taking care of the basics for all Angelenos.
Well, thank you, sir, but I want to call on Mr. Price at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand in support of the renomination, the reappointment of Mr. Fundenberg. He certainly has been, I think, a very positive force on the board, has led the charges for more accountability, greater equity, in all aspects of the operation, and so I look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you, not just on projects in the Ninth District, but citywide as an impact quality of life. Congratulations. Keep up the work, and you've got my support.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to stand in strong support of the reappointment for Bill Fundenberg. And with the Commissioner, we get a twofer. Not only is he an attorney, not only is he an expert in this field, but he's also a community leader and a community person who gives that community perspective. And, you know, your work in equity metrics, not just the other issues that you worked on, but quietly working behind the scenes and in front of the scenes and always pushing for equity metrics is sorely needed, and thank you so much for all your work, and I look forward to working with you again and continue your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise in support of Mr. Fundenberg. You know, when I first joined the council, one of the most impressive things about him is his real commitment to diversity and making sure that residents, like the ones I represent in my district and that neck of the woods of the northeast San Fernando Valley, were not only being represented, but actually being looked out for, and I think you've done an amazing job representing the people who often don't get heard in this building, and so I want to commend you for that. Your equity metrics is groundbreaking when it comes to not only making sure we're delivering utilities to our residents, but that we're doing it in a diversified way, that we're looking out for the little people, the people that don't always get to come here and speak, and for the ratepayer that sometimes are just making ends meet to try to make sure their bill gets paid, and you look out for those people. So I want to make sure you get acknowledged for that, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. I think you're an amazing person.
Thank you, Council member, and if it weren't for all the work that the people did before me, who came before me, it never would have happened, and those who don't have a voice need a voice, those who don't have a say need a say, those who don't have a seat at the table need a seat at the table, and it's not about me, it's about DWP and the entire institution changing and our board, and with your support, we will not just continue to implement equity metrics accounting, we will do the necessary work of remediation as well.
Well, thank you. You know, thinking about our former colleague, Bill Rosendahl, he had two sayings. One would be his great, 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 the other would be it's a no-brainer. Selecting you, reconfirming you is a no-brainer. So with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Congratulations. Items 1, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42, Mr. Walsh, and then your general public comment.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number one, this is the maintenance of street lighting. You do an excellent job on street lighting. I'm not one of these guys that says, "What are you doing this? What are you doing that? You're a bunch of cooks." That's another white guy. That's not this white guy, okay? And you're doing an excellent job, and I've been here since 1966. Who else has been here since 66? And I was an adult then. Number 35. The important thing about number 35 is this is a REAP rent escrow account. You do an excellent job there, too. Okay, here's where you do a terrible job. The street maintenance on Hollywood Boulevard Walk of Fame. Somebody took a crap on the President of the United States' star, and no one noticed it for four days.
Mr. President, the speaker's off topic.
Talking about Jason Bateman's star and how you can treat Jason Bateman's star and how you can make sure that it isn't a piece of shit, and you can stop me all you want as the fucking city attorney. I have the First Amendment on my mind.
Just stay on the topic, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, but you are not the one who stopped me. It was this scumbag.
I know, just stay on topic, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, well, you know he's a scumbag.
Stay on, Mr. Walsh, come on.
Okay, number 36, this is the installation of the Jason Bateman star, and then you come to number 38. And number 38, this is a lot of money, and this is Public Safety Committee. I'm not worried about the public, I'm worried about the fire department. A fire department was killed, and it was manslaughter. That was manslaughter on the bridge, I mean, on the ladder. We'll go into that a little later. Number 39, this is Urban Area Security Initiative, no problems there. Number 41. Okay, number 42, internet crimes against children. Don't worry about the kids. You've got fire department people dying in the street the first time ever, and you're worried about internet crimes against children? Please, it's just a way for you to make money. I'm going to give you back your five seconds and go into public.
Let's give Mr. Walsh his minute for general public comment.
Okay, number one, there's never been a fatal accident during training. Why? Why? And a scumbag reporter, let me tell you how this works. The mayor of the city flirts with a homosexual reporter. He's around, he's an ugly guy, you'll notice him, and he flirts with them, and then they don't do a story. There's a dead person was on a ladder. Why? You don't give a fucking shit, Mr. Price, as long as he's not black. In fact, he's sleeping. He's sleeping. Mr. Rue doesn't give a shit about it. Mr. Englander isn't even here. I'm telling you right now that as it stands, cops and robbers. How about the cadet program here? They just had to, they had to fold the cadet program because the cops, you couldn't tell the cops from the robbers over at LAPD.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Harris Dawson.
It's out that there's a man dressed in a Ku Klux Klan outfit flailing his arms in the audience. I think it's Mr. Herman, but I'm not sure, and also a man gyrating a pig puppet while people are trying to speak and interact with the government.
Thank you for alerting me to that. Mr. Previn, can I get Mr. Previn's, the cards that Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, you will be able to speak on 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 45, 46, and then general public comment.
Thank you, sir, and I assume you're going to call us later on the Special One item. Is that correct? That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so item number 38 is some reapropriation for some LAPD money. I believe it's connected to the Urban Area Security Grant, but there's a lot of grants on the agenda today, and the grants give a feeling that the people who are receiving the money have a good take on what to do. One thing to do in regard to the LAPD reapropriation would be to immediately, if not sooner, get back from a company called, previously called TASER, now called Axon, approximately $8 million. We signed a contract in excess of $65, almost $70 million for these TASERS, which Martinez is having his service now, but, but look, we are due that money. The public of Los Angeles took a big bet on this company, and now they're offering entry-level deals for everybody. We ought to get that money back. Mr. Kirkory can put it to very good use, and we all can, so I appreciate Mr. Englander not going down to Arizona getting campaign donations, but going down and getting that refund appropriately. Item 39 is ITA. This is specifically an Urban Area Security Grant, and though they're due to get $347,000, I think that that has to be put on hold pending what is, can only be described as a civil rights violation. Mr. Ted Ross, who's a terrific guy, this is a guy who looks terrific next to Mayor Garcetti as the head of ITA, is instructing his employees to regularly reduce to little people, not what Ms. Martinez meant the actual, but people who testify in front of the public at public hearings are being reduced to the size of hashtag Blue and Fields knows. It's completely inappropriate, needs to change immediately, and I appreciate your leadership there, sir. Item number 40 is a violence against women grant. Obviously, we're all against violence against women. This one is specifically for women with disabilities. So then it raises the question, though, for the internet crime money. We've got some internet crime money against children, we're trying to stop that, but is that also for, does that include the disability children or not? I mean, it does seem a little odd to take a half a million dollars and specifically deploy it for one group when we loathe the whole subject. All Angelenos should be protected from violence against women, obviously, in my view, and we've done a great job here at the city of tapping giant resources about disabilities with Willetts, with the independent living case, with Mei Ling's current matter. This is, we have, we don't do a great job, sir, at providing access. I think we've seen that over and over again. We need to do a better job. Item number 45 is an $18 million bond to help DeeDee Hirsch. That's a psychiatric provider. You've got, item number 46 is once again shortening the notice from 24 days to 10. How, if somebody could please explain, is that in the public's interest? We certainly see how somebody gets the benefit of faking everybody out, which seems to be the primary activity of this council, but, but it's not really in the public's interest, is it? I didn't think so. And to move on to item number 40, what did I say, 41, here you have $3.125 million LAPD money among a pile of overtime.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's go to his general public comment at this time.
Because it's about community policing, sir. Don't turn the microphone down, that's in poor form. So I will spend the remaining time trying to explain why I think item 21, which you have on the agenda, is a mistake. We're taking about $15 million to get 1,000 motorhomes, or they call them househomes, off the street. Now, we leave behind 500 because the people can't pick them up. The reason why they can't pick them up may or may not be because they don't want them. It may be because they can't pay the steep and onerous fees. Here, we're going to pay the OPG, this is Englander's guys who run the official police garage, $250,000 out of our limited LAPD resources to deal with that stuff. Now, they're probably selling pieces of it anyway, so I find this abhorrent, is the best way to put it, in the nicest possible way, to be deploying city money. These are people who, you know, living in a car, there's five or six thousand, ask Bonin when he's around, Bonin, they're living in their cars, they go to work every day. Okay, so we have a problem. We do have a problem because we charge too much for rent all over the place because we don't provide linkage fees, which you heard about, and by the way, I want to say thank you to Mr. Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Now I'd like to call up Michael Carrion. Michael has item 44, and then your general public, so if you give him a minute for each. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Here we go, once again, taking from Adam to give Steve. You know, you keep getting this money from places, then it never ends up where it's supposed to go because it goes in somebody else's pocket, and you keep getting all these large construction complexes you're building, but there's no infrastructure. Every time you guys put these buildings up and the plumbing breaks, you poison the community. All the gas, all the oil, all the runoff goes into the pipes that are busted, and it goes into somebody's faucet. But you're too busy getting kickbacks from the large companies like Mr. Weezer, a million dollars to what, beautify downtown? Why don't you put that million dollars into the infrastructure, the plumbing, the pipes, the things that keep breaking every day? That's where that money needs to be going.
Let's give, let's give Mr., let's give Mr. Carrion his one minute.
Okay, I spoke to Mr. Weezer's office a year ago on this. He said he took care of it, but he didn't. Brush clearance. My mother-in-law sent this bill a year ago, and I came in front of this board and told them that you guys are full of shit. You've never cleaned that brush? I did. That grass has never gone more than an inch long. Now, if they're screwed up and they're blaming the neighbor's tree that hangs over a little bit or the neighbor's backyard because they don't know how to tell a map, our property ends and the neighbor goes up behind ours. But yet, because she's elderly, you guys say $37 to check your property, which they never checked because we've been asking for pictures, never got them, yet there's a late notice adding another 40-something dollars. So I asked Mr. Weezer what happened. He dropped the ball? He comes in, he doesn't want to look, he doesn't want to talk. Bet you if there was a lady half naked here, he'd be over there in a heartbeat. Shame on you.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson, come on. Just relax, take your time, come on. General public comment for Ms. Richardson. Let's vote on item 18, one minute, Ms. Richardson. On item 18, let's open the roll, close the roll to have you late to vote. Yes, ma'am.
And some of the illegal immigration policies.
10 ayes.
Protest, some of the whites in there, they're not protesting for the Mexicans, they're protesting for themselves because some of them don't have paperwork either. Some of the Mexicans in those immigration protests, they're, some of the whites are from Russia and some of the Mexican people are also from Russia. Some of the Orientals and Blacks that need to protest in those demonstrations, they don't, they also need immigration rights or immigration rights. It is difficult right now to tell the difference between an American, a Russian, and a holograph. Everybody wants immigration rights, and it's all confused because nobody knows the Russians are here, that the Russians are white, Black, Mexican, and Orientals. Everybody wants immigration rights.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, items 1, 3, 35, AB, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and general public comment.
Yep, yep, here I am, boys. Here's your house, boy in the K.K. outfit, but as long as mine represents honesty on item 1.
Stay on the topic, Mr. Herman, on the topic.
As long as it represents item 1 and CD 10, as I was rudely interrupted, because the hearing is about improvement and maintenance. Not that my color of skin is any different from some of you when you make a protest against the speakers simply because he's talking about street lighting to expose the colors of a politician who's awfully Black. And then I go to item number 2, first consideration relative to improvement of law maintenance.
We already voted on item 2, Mr. Herman. You have item 3, and then you go up to 35.
Item 3, CD 1, CD 1. Am I relevant? I got nothing to say about Gilbert Sidle. He's a good man, congratulations. Then I go onto item 44, where all the white niggers live. Item 44, yeah, his name is Jose Weezer's district, 44, and it's regarding what? A 12th Street, South Hope Street. Well, let me remind you fools about Hope Street. It's only a broken promise by Weezer. Why do I say that? Because Michael Carrion talked about Weezer being a fool regarding the Broadway, what, skyscrapers? Michael Carrion talked about Weezer being a fool, regarding the Broadway, what, skyscrapers? Why don't you build some infrastructure for your goddamn community first? Put some goddamn community money where it belongs, on Broadway.
Stay, stay on the topic.
For housing. I'm on subject, mothers. My mother knows how to read. Only five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Los Angeles neighborhood. What initiative? Bringing back Broadway? Well, I got something to bring back for Broadway. Fuck Broadway, and fuck the Jews, Bloomfield, who fucked up my community on Broadway. You know why? Because it's all about the money, the prestigious stance to say, I built Broadway. Well, you know what? This white nigger built Broadway. The guy in the Klan cap, the mental health guy that you ranted about before the kids, but they're absent, Bloomfield.
No, stay on the subject.
And so the subject goes on regarding Weezer. Has he really built Broadway Fiesta? Go look at all the empty shops. Go look at all the hazards of Willet's versus who other? Los Angeles, one point three billion dollar settlement. And then in regards to affordable housing on Fiesta Broadway under Measure H and HHH, fuck you too, Weezer.
Okay, now give him his general public comment minute.
So now that I got the attention of the Jew boy, Bloomfield, when he talks about mental health, well, let's talk about the Jews' mental health when they killed Jesus Christ and put him to a stake, and they said the man is taking away our parishioners.
This is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, Mr. President.
General public comment.
No, but Mr. Herman, you know you have to, okay, cut his time. Thank you, Mr. Herman. You know you have to speak on items that we have some, no, no, you don't, Ms., no, your thirty-two seconds are gone. Sergeants, remove him.
Are you going to shoot a man in a cane?
Mr. Herman, please.
And Mr. Herman is continuing.
He's continuing to disrupt this meeting. He was given instructions, refused to follow them. You can only speak on items that there's some, city has some direct or indirect relationship with. Let's get Mr. Spindler's items and, and remove Mr. Herman.
And just in case the mics aren't picking up, he's continuing to shout and disrupt the meeting as he walks backward out of the room, obviously to delay things.
Okay, help him a little faster than that. Come on, Mr. Spindler, you have items one, you have one, three, five, seven, nine, you have nine, thirty-five, B, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and you have general public comment.
Mr. Krikorian, I believe, wanted to be recognized.
No, why don't you just do, speak to your items?
All right, so what do we have? Let's go ahead, Mr. Poppet.
Thank you so much. This fucking agenda improvement and fucking maintenance of Fernando Light District. Yes, we need light, bright white light, like that fucking shirt that Ernesto's and is wearing today without a jacket, yes. CD one, CD five, lights, more lights, more lights. Are there any in other areas where there's high drug trafficking? Let us review for a minute now. Item CD one, CD one, they're working very hard, and Mr. Sadio, to try to clean up homeless encampment. Thank you, we support number three. Number five involves a goat. Yes, number five involves a lighting district dealing with a goat. And that would be Mr. Krikorian's district. And there's too many lights already in there. Lights from Broadway, lights from CBS, too many fucking lights in CD two. There's just too much. So we do not support number five. There's enough fucking lights in CD two. Give some to CD eight for the bright shirted gentleman, yes. So now, number six, oh, we have a CD six lighting district. Go ahead. Na, 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 a CD six update. San Fernando Valley lighting for the pimps and the drug dealers in CD six. Yes, we support it. The traffickers were talking the other day in Sepulveda Boulevard. We need more lights. It's too dark out there. People are complaining in CD six. They're trying to get the prostitutes properly displayed. They're trying to get the drugs properly displayed, and there's not enough lighting in CD six. So drop four and five, only six. Go ahead. Number seven, more lighting.
Really?
Yes, there's more lighting, bright lights.
Stay on the topic.
Okay, so number, the number eleven, bluff creek. We're not fucking bluffing when we say that the.
Mr. President, Mr. Eleven is our.
Stay on the subject, mister.
Stay on the subject.
Let's give him his minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Poppet, for your assistance. So tonight at the Studio City Neighborhood Council, there's a motion to investigate subornation of perjury and perjury. Yes, thank you, Studio City Neighborhood Council. We need to investigate the perjury of May twentieth, twenty sixteen, on that phony fucking TRO that Mr. Wesson got against me. Now we know the truth. Thank you, Studio City, that LA City was never a party to the transaction involving a workplace violence restraining order. Therefore, it's void. And the gun they got from it is void. It is all void. I am going to seek troubled damages. I'm going to file a new lawsuit against Mr. Fur under fifty-two point one of the Bain Act, and I'm going to call Herb Wesson as a witness if you don't drop that fucking gun charge tomorrow. You understand? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Okay, that, do we have Mr. Gutierrez on item one? Robert? Then let's, let's vote now on items one, three, five, seven, and nine. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now let's move to items thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, and forty-six. On those items, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go to item forty-four.
And, Mr. President, actually.
You may want to explain what we've got going on that.
Thank you, sir. And actually, on the items with the ordinances, those will be held over one week to June twenty-eighth, and there are requests to send also the items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-five forthwith.
Okay.
And then on forty-four, a substitute motion has been posted and distributed, and there are two votes required.
Okay, so this first vote is the substitute?
Correct.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Ten ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
A special one motion has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Mr. Weezer, special one?
Are we voting on the Rule twenty-three or on the special itself?
So there are two votes involved. First is the findings, and if that passes, we'll take general public, or comment on it, and then vote on the substance of the motion.
Great, thank you. Well, colleagues, this is a Rule twenty-three that we put forward today. This is concerned some individuals, tenants who have been removed from two dwellings, illegal dwellings in the Arch District. The Fire Department has ordered the closure of the dwellings after some of our efforts to make some of these buildings safer, safer given what happened in Oakland and the fire there. We were hopeful on an extension that would be provided by the Fire Department to allow them to stay there a little bit longer, and we're not sure if that will happen. However, these individuals need to move on, and the landlord has been required to pay relocation fees, and today, by the adoption of the actual motion, we will provide three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from the city's budget to ensure that these Angelenos are not left without assistance or be in the possibility of becoming homeless. So through this effort, we will be reimbursed once we get the payment from the landlord through the court proceedings, but this is just simply a way to move forward with this. On the, and they are being evicted tomorrow, and that's why.
So the time makes it a emergency. So let's first vote on findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now I have some cards on this. So I believe I have Mr. Spindler, Mr. Walsh, Mr., in fact, Mr. Carrion, and Mr. Previn. So come on, you don't have to come up in any, and if I have you, I don't see Mr. Sax, I'll look for it. So go ahead.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for standing up for a tenant. Three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Sorry that we have to pay it and the landlord doesn't, but in any case, you're doing a good job. I can't believe how, what a good job. You came, you came out against Vera Gose for governor, now you're doing this for us. I wish this was on the regular agenda, but in any case, we support this one hundred percent, and we want the tenants' rights always to be respected. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Sax, I got you. So you can come on. Go ahead.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn from the Second District in Studio City. I, I must say, it's very nice that Mr. Weezer is reaching out. This is the, I put the address into a Google search in an article by Joseph Serna, the LA Times came up. This was one of the buildings that Mike Fur tagged in December as potentially problematic. Now, I assume that's, that was after the horrible ghost fire up in Oakland. The question is, these two tenants, how could they, because the building that I looked at, nine thirty-one East Pico, is an office space. Now, I realize sometimes people live in the office, but, but this is just an enormous amount of money to be fronting. Now, I suppose we're going to get it off of the guy who's the, what is it, Neiman, who was some kind of a, in twenty fourteen, he had a problem with the Synalow and Drug Cartel. I, I don't know why this city attorney is so confident he's going to get the money back. I'm sympathetic to the residents who may be put out on the street tomorrow, but, but this should be vetted in a proper form. I mean, I just feel like hurrying up and waiting until the last minute is, is not very transparent, but let's, let's make sure that two people less are not homeless.
Thank you. And Michael, don't forget, you're, you're in the queue as well. Yes, sir, Mr. Spindler.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for this general gift. We must give drug cartel people more money free from the city. Three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar gift, thank you for that. And we support legal drug sales as well, and we support tenant relocation.
Get on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
We support tenant relocation. We support this thoroughly. It's so nice, isn't it, that we're going to pay to relocate three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, because we have so much extra money in the budget, it won't be any problem at all. And Mr. Weezy is the best, yes. So whenever you have an illegal tenement, make sure there's two things. One, located in CD fourteen. The second, make sure you have lots of drug dealing cash. We like you. Thank you.
Michael, Michael Carrion.
Okay, once again, I agree with some of the gentlemen spoke. I do agree with this, although there's a little words in here I don't care for too much. The city may also, may also take action. It doesn't say the city will take action. You know, the way that I've been dealing with Mr. Weezer lately, I'm curious whether he's doing this for the tenants, or if he's doing this for the owner. If you're evicting everybody and paying them off, and then he doesn't have to pay because the city forgives him, and the money doesn't have to be repaid, and then somewhere down the line, you get a kickback. I can't get you to work on a seventy-two dollar bill, but you're going to work on people that haven't even been evicted yet, and you're probably working on the side of the homeowner, the business owner, the drug dealer, because I don't see you doing anything for the community lately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sax?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. Relocation fees, is this to affordable housing? Is this to relative, same amount of rent that these people are paying now? How is that even possible? But my big concern here is that the city is going to file a lien against the property owner. What happens if it's a licensed liability corporation? You know, there's this property in Bel Air where this person has built illegally over and above what he was supposed to do, and the city has filed a lien against the property, only to find out that the LLC, the person listed on the LLC, is no longer affiliated with the property. And the owner of this property is a millionaire many times over, is saying he's going to build what he wants to build. Tough crap, what the city wants to do. So what happens in this situation where the owner of the property listed on the lien, or on the LLC, is no longer affiliated with the property? How does the city?
Thank you, Mr. Sax, thank you. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise briefly, because, as you know, Mr. President, I, I frequently vote against the findings on special ones, because I think unless there's a compelling reason, matters should be agendized. This is precisely the sort of issue that this process is entirely appropriate under Rule twenty-three, and I want to just point that out and thank and applaud Mr. Weezer for rallying to the defense of the dozens and dozens of people who tomorrow will be homeless if we don't take this action. Dozens of poor elderly people who've been taken advantage by this landlord, if that's what you want to call him, who are going to be put on the streets tomorrow if we don't act. So, and I just wanted to respond a little bit to some of the silly public comment. The funding for this is coming from the foreclosure registry penalty fee account, a perfectly appropriate use of those funds, and it's reimbursable, and I have every confidence that the city attorney will aggressively pursue this slumlord to get this money back and, and reimburse the foreclosure registry penalty fund. So I rise in support of the findings, and I'll go ahead and speak in support of the underlying motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Weezer. No, Mr. Spindler, do you want to stay at the chambers? Then, no, in fact, Mr. Chain, Mr. City Attorney, I just want to go on the record. Mr. Spindler is disrupting the meeting. If I have to talk to him again, I will ask the sergeants to escort him out of the chambers. Mr. Weezer?
Just for the record, before we move on, just in case the mics didn't pick it up, there were goat noises coming from Mr. Spindler and throughout disrupting the meeting.
Thank you. Is this on the findings or the actual motion?
This, we're voting on the motion.
On the motion itself, okay.
Yeah, we voted for the findings.
Okay, got you. Well, I simply wanted to thank Mr. Krikorian, Krikorian and staff for finding the appropriate funding mechanism to make this possible. We made a commitment to these tenants to assist them before they had the potential of becoming homeless, and we were grappling with where to get the money, and Mr. Krikorian's office came through for us. Thank you so much for your work on this, Mr. Krikorian, and correctly as stated, we will be reimbursed once the judicial proceedings are completed. So as Mr. Krikorian stated, I have full confidence the city will be reimbursed for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Okay.
And there is a request to send this forthwith, Mr. President.
One second. Sergeants, we had removed Mr. Herman, he's opening up the door and making sounds disrupting the meeting again. He should not be anywhere near this chambers. And Mr. Spindler, you can go on and leave with him as well. So, with that said, what is, again, before this body?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Wait, I think, I'm told we have another, do we have another general public comment card? Do we have a Mr. Kim? Okay, so, let's go back to you, Madam Clerk. You said we have items for posting?
That is correct.
Okay, they're posted, they're referred. That brings us to announcements, announcements, members. I'll start off again tomorrow, eighteen nineteen Western, twelve-thirty, lunch will be served for our city employees at my district office. You all are welcome. This is the tenth year that we've done that. It'll be tomorrow, twelve-thirty. All of the city employees are welcome, plus staff of all of my colleagues. Any other announcements? None? Can everybody please rise? Rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left side, I don't see anything, any motions to my left. I'm now looking to my right, I don't see any. Members, this meeting's adjourned.